I don't know, is she?
Yeah, then your necklace will get tangled.
That works.
Recording in progress. I have not been home.
A call to order the Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 Town Council Regular Meeting to Order at 6:34. Clerk McCauser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had, I'll just read the role. I will read the role. Counselor Bordelon.
Here.
Counselor Franco.
Here.
Counselor Jacome. Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Parker. Counselor Westervelt.
Here.
All right. You have five.
Five, plus me, that's six. That is a quorum. If everyone would please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now on to recognitions, awards, and memorials. Proclamation in recognition of USS Nautilus Panapo Day. Counselor Westervelt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation in recognition of USS Nautilus Panapo Day. Whereas USS Nautilus, SSN 571, the world's first nuclear-powered ship, was launched in Groton, Connecticut, on January 21st, 1954. And whereas on January 17th, 1955, USS Nautilus cast off from Groton, sending the historic message underway on nuclear power, establishing Groton as the submarine capital of the world. And whereas on August 3rd, 1958, USS Nautilus sailed from the Pacific Ocean to the top of the world, reaching the Atlantic, or excuse me, reaching the North Pole by traveling under the Arctic ice, sending the famous message, "Nautilus 90 North." And whereas USS Nautilus continued on the, onto the Atlantic Ocean, creating a new path from the Pacific to the Atlantic via the North Pole, the path that became known as Panapo. And whereas the U.S. Navy and the Nautilus Alumni Association are celebrating the 65th anniversary of the historic Panapo event today, August 4th, 2023, with members of the original Panapo crew and descendants present, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton does hereby proclaim August 4th, 2023, as USS Nautilus Panapo Day in the Town of Groton. Dated at Groton on this day, August 4th, 2023, Juan A. Melendez, Mayor, Town of Groton.
Thank you. On to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-ct.gov by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. First on my list, I have Tom Olson.
Tom Olson, one of the crossroads projects in Groton. I'm here with the Conservation Commission. We just want, we saw that the Groton Open Space is on your agenda for tonight. And just reiterate that the Conservation Commission fully endorses the application for the open space watershed acquisition grant with the DEP. And we've reviewed their application also. It's fairly well complete now. We've had an opportunity to take a look at it, and it's going to be a good application to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Genevieve Sur.
Take this rig off. Okay. Hi, my name is Genevieve Sur. I live at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. Good evening, councilors. I'm here tonight to say a few things about the data center issue that was an article recently in the London Day. And I also found out about the lawsuit when I went to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting about a month ago, because I think I remember it was the same night as at council. And they approved their new zoning regulations for data centers. And specifically, they reduced the size of the data centers that they will, would allow near-residential neighborhoods, or, you know, I guess possibly some environmental issues like wetlands and things like that. And as a result, at the planning and zoning meeting, we had this Mr. Fiorello there who came in on Zoom on basically citizens' petitions and started kind of grilling the Planning and Zoning Commission as if they were, you know, suspects in a crime scene or something like that, which was sort of unbelievable. You know, his talk of his lawsuit absolutely didn't belong in the Planning and Zoning Commission for starters. And the thing that was equally shocking was the fact that the lawsuit was for $30 billion. That's B as in baby, $30 billion. Now, I can't even begin to imagine, even if the state could pay a lawsuit that big, never mind the Town of Groton. And of course, all you councilors were named in the lawsuit. So there we are, you know, with another project like the Mystic Oral School, where the state has kind of foisted these projects on us, like the rest, the dollar sale to Resplur with a lot of what's called TIF, which are tax incentives. And they did the same thing with the data centers. They foisted this thing on us with a lot of TIF and not a lot of specifications about the details of how this was going to work. And of course, in combination with the New London State Pier thing, which is kind of the same deal coming from the state, I think from now on, we ought to be much more suspect and cautious about anything that the state sends our way. Because clearly, you know, they do this pretty much in favor of the developers, not really considering the town, or what kind of, you know, the fact that we can't take these gigantic lawsuits if the developers aren't happy with what we're delivering. Now, most important thing is that TIF, the tax incentive, it sort of works like this. While somebody is building something, and we, by the way, we had a very good example of it when Peter Pappas wanted to build an extra building for his research center, which is excellent. And he wanted to build an extra building, but he wanted tax incentives because it was going to take him about five years. By the time he built the building, got all the equipment going, got the people hired who were going to work there before he would actually start to make money. And I recall at a time that the previous town manager, no offense to you, John, the previous town manager had prepared a really nice little package for us, where we could see every year how much the property was worth, how much of a tax incentive we would give him. And the tax incentive would go down every year, the tax incentive would go down more and more as he was building up his thing more and more, until, you know, he was finished and the tax incentives were finished. And it was very detailed and was very clear, down to the last dollar, you know? This is the kind of process that I like to see, and the kind of process that the PRUC has put together, the Property Reuse Committee.
One minute remains.
Fantastic job, essentially outlining this kind of transparency, accountability, details, community involvement, because inevitably, the community has to pay that difference between the tax incentives the entire time. The community has to pay that much more in taxes, because we're not getting it from the person who is developing property or putting equipment in or whatever. So the community should be, also be involved in these decisions. They should be told what's going to happen, they should look at the numbers, and they should be basically in favor of doing this, not constantly fighting these projects that we don't understand. So what I'm really pleading with you to do today is give us that transparency, the community involvement, and mainly the accountability and some real numbers to explain to us what you're doing with these TIP projects.
Thank you.
And one coming up with the Bennys redevelopment, I suppose. I know they also want TIP money. So please bear it, bear in mind that we need more details.
It'd be nice if they were written up.
Next on my list, I have Kelly Paulson.
Kelly Paulson, 112 Laurelwood Road. The six residents of 113 across the street from me since March exceeds the four residents maximum per the code enforcement officer of Groton. 113 is also the house that has been light trespassing into my home for six years, over six years. I've been respectfully requesting residential light trespass ordinances since February of 2022. Nothing has moved forward on this ordinance, which is telling me that at least some of you must be guilty of light trespass. Do your outside lights trespass onto your neighbor's property? Do your lights trespass through your neighbor's property? Do your lights trespass into your neighbor's home and disrupt the circadian rhythms of their sleep? Do they keep their children up at night, affecting both the health of the family and the children, and also affecting the children's ability to learn? None of this is fair. These ordinances are not saying that you can't have outdoor lights. These ordinance that I'm requesting are saying that they should be the lumens necessary to do the job. That is, light the path to your home, light your driveway, light the doorknob so you can unlock it, but not to trespass on anybody else's property. This is your lights, they should stay on your property and not trespass into the neighbor's property or their home. Not only that, these outdoor lights that are not shielded and not the lumens necessary to do the job, and the lights that are trespassing and invading people's home, which basically is the same thing as you walking into your neighbor's house in the middle of the night. It's invasion, it's trespass. But all of this light is also adding to the increased cancer risks, the increased cancer levels and numbers of the area. It is also increasing global warming. Global warming, if not checked, if you've seen the projections, causes oceans to rise, which all the projection maps show that Groton will not even exist, it'll be underwater. Respectfully request light trespass ordinances, saying that outdoor light should be the lumens necessary to do the job, not to trespass on neighbor's property, not to trespass in people's homes, not to disrupt the circadian rhythms and reproductive cycles of all living things, not to increase global warming, not to increase cancer, not to increase the levels of difficulty of children in school, not to disrupt people's sleep, to have them shielded so they don't trespass on anybody else's property. Respectfully request light trespass ordinances to help become better neighbors, better people, and help the environment, which is really needed. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Mary Ellen Furlong.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ellen Furlong. I live at 57 Fishtown Lane in Noank, Mystic, Groton. I have some questions for the town manager. How many consultants does the town have? What is the process? Or is there a deliberate process for hiring consultants? And what is the cost to the town of these consultants? We need consultants who are from Connecticut or are familiar with New England to give us better advice. I believe I heard at one meeting that the staff had a consultant checking on the number of STRs in town. And we have consultants doing surveys on the amenities the taxpayers want. I believe the latest planned addition is a consultant on coastal resilience and sustainability in the face of climate change. This consultant would advise the full-time staffer who has been hired to deal with this. Hard to believe that all we have to show from some of these consultants is a Popeye's Restaurant, agreements on the amenities such as playing fields and a pool that the townspeople have repeatedly requested, and the request by Counselor Parker to dissolve the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, a group made up of volunteers, many of them local, including The police don't seem interested in a noise ordinance. In this town, construction can start early on a Sunday morning and last well into the evening, as it did once near our house. This would not be allowed in most other towns. It is a backwards attitude. Almost all the other towns have a noise ordinance. You don't need special equipment to measure decibels. You can download a free app on your phone that does it very accurately. They work well. Much of our downtown noise is due to overcrowded conditions, not just traffic and people wandering through other people's backyards. We also need a stronger litter ordinance, common for coastal towns, and a sensible light ordinance to protect the environment as well as people. What I see is a threat of a depressing future, especially after the vacuous presentation by Casey Kidd, who appears to have been working for the town staff for four years, and apparently has a very low opinion of Groton and Groton's future. Please note his comment in last year's day, dated July 20th, 2022, that the people of Groton are more concerned about cost than quality. That certainly is not what I hear. If this is allowed to continue, Groton won't be a desirable or acceptable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my list. Is there anyone in the room that would wish to speak at this time? Mayor J. Burke, is there anyone online?
There's no one online.
Okay. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name's Ian Thomas. 24 Jefferson Drive, and I'm an RTM member, D3. Just want to follow up on Ms. Furlong's comments. I'm also very curious to know how much we're spending on consultants. I also attended the, the event last week, and I thought you said we had five minutes. That was set for three. So, so the, 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 the presentation last Thursday was the same one that I saw last year, where there's a historical retrospective of Groton and everything that we already knew, if you've read any of those old town books that are for sale on CBS. So, you know, I don't know what we're paying these guys for, honestly. There was not one innovative idea coming out of Navi Retail's mind during that presentation. I asked specifically, a number of us asked, a number of us in attendance, and I'd asked for a very specific suggestion, anything that we could do. Like what does, what do they suggest would be a good way to move forward with, you know, landlords that don't want to renovate, or, you know, trying to do some adaptive reuse on the Groton Shopping Plaza area? There was nothing. The guy said basically like, you know, eat chicken and buy oil filters, you know? That was his solution, was spend money in town on, you know, I mean, there's good places to spend money here, but it's not everything we want. You know, it's not what we've been asking for. So I don't know what we're spending these monies on these consultants for. And as Ms. Furlong, you know, went down the list, I mean, resiliency and sustainability, we have a task force of local experts that got the grassroots. And so we have the new manager now, so why don't we just put the two together and have the task force work as a supplement to the manager? Anyway, so yeah, I'll, gonna look into the consultant thing, I'd like to know more as the, as an RTM member and, you know, the body that's charged with financial oversight of the town. I'll gonna look into that. So unless you want to share that information tonight, that'd be great. Received an email from Counselor McBride regarding the Property Reuse Committee, asking for the RTM, or any RTM member who felt so motivated and inclined to come forward with the power of initiative for next week's meeting. And so I have not heard from any other RTM members expressing any interest in that, and I checked with the clerk, and so far as I know, no one else has come forward. So I have a draft resolution of a power of initiative here that I'm going to submit to the clerk and be included in the agenda package for the RTM that'll be issued tomorrow. And hopefully, we'll be able to move it forward onto the floor next week. And so I invite anyone that has any feelings about the Property Reuse Committee documents and how were they, how they were treated here at the council, to come to the RTM meeting next week and speak your mind to that issue. I'm not going to read the resolution tonight. I'll save that for the agenda package. And so along those lines, I would just encourage you all to, to exercise a little more due diligence on the consultant thing. I don't know how much money we're spending on that, but it is absurd, the amount of consultants that we have and the way we still seem to founder and flounder for an idea when it comes to things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will close receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. On the consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion on these items will take place unless cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to adopt. So I'll make a motion to move the special trust fund contributions from July and the July 3rd, 2023 minutes, so move.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordelon. Counsel Franco.
Thank you. I would like to notate on our packet, page nine, the fourth person that spoke at the Town Council meeting was Jean-Claude Ambrose, and it's stated in here that he made statements that were inappropriate, and the town clerk, McCauser, amended his comments. I think it's our residents come to our council meetings and express their thoughts on this council, and the things that we do on this council, whether positive or negative. And if we're going to continue to put in everybody else's comments, I don't think with freedom of speech and our community is right to come and have an open meeting and speak what they're saying, that this statement should be stricken. And I believe Mr. Ambrose, a summary of what he said could be put in here, maybe not specific language, but a summary of what he had to say, as well as when reading this, you can see a summary of everybody else's. Thank you.
Counsel Bordelon. Council Boardaline.
Thank you. I just want to give the clerk a lot of respect for taking the time to, I know there's a lot of criticism on what's put in, but I do think that some of the stuff that's been put in here becomes more personal and about policy and about government. And so I think admitting those things when they're personal attacks, it wouldn't be allowed in a workforce environment, shouldn't be allowed in a government environment. So when comments are made like so-and-so didn't vote on this item, that's government. When you make direct attacks, this person is this, that's personal, and it doesn't belong here. So I, for one, who those comments were directed, if you're interested in them, please go back online, it's recorded, it's there, and you can listen to it again if you so wish. But I do want to give the clerk much respect. That was coming from our Democratic Chair in the city of Groton, and they were personal attacks, not about policy or politics. And so I feel it was very germane, and I can agree that, yes, as an elected official, we too have to be ready to take the heat. Unfortunately, you can't do much other than to take it, but we can, in local government, as we have a cop standing here, stop the personal attacks when it's not about policy. Thank you.
Clerk McCauser.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Franco. You are correct that that should not have been in the way it was. That was my fault for leaving it in there. I did correct the minutes and have given Mr. Ambois the opportunity to send his statements to be attached to the permanent record. But I do want to note that FOI have been trained over and over again with what is acceptable and what isn't for minutes. And when it comes to citizens' petitions, they're regarded as just that, citizens' petitions, and there really aren't even supposed to be minutes for them. It's just their name and address. So I've done more than, in the past, more than really is expected for a citizen's petition. And I think that there should be a little something. But when it is an attack on any of you, I just think that that's not town business anyway, you know? But I shouldn't say town clerk says. Okay. We'll fix it. It is fixed, actually.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I just noticed that, like, other councillors are mentioned in other comments, so I think it should be equally taken care of. So I appreciate you correcting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Boardaline.
What's the exact correction? Because I don't have the correction here.
You should have gotten an email from me either yesterday.
Can someone read the correction then?
Yeah, so I can read it.
Because I got an updated thing that was just put here with all of our referrals, and that updated piece was not added.
It was an email from me, not from the town manager.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we get these packets on Thursday to review them in a timely manner. I've already reviewed these, and so anything else addition usually the town manager brings on the day of that we can review quickly. So if there's some addition, that would be great to know.
Mm-hmm.
If we're voting on something.
Okay, so what I have in the permanent record right now as a draft is Jean-Claude Ambois, 169 Shenacosta Parkway, stated that he is a member of the RTM representing District 2. He made statements regarding his opinion of town council rules and parliamentary procedure. He also made comments directed at individuals. And if he gives me his statement of the actual evening, not something that he wants in the record, I won't accept additional things. It has to be the statement that he made that evening. I'll put that in the record also, and it will have an additional byline that says his statement is attached to the permanent record. That's not there yet because I don't have it.
Thank you. Okay. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Which one are we voting? Aye, just point of information.
We're voting on the consent calendar.
Are we voting on the amendment that she just read?
No, we're just voting on the whole consent calendar.
So what's here written in our packet right now that states town clerk McCauser omitted his comments?
That will be removed, and she will add what she read to the...
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Here's unanimously six in favors, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto communications and reports. Council Franco.
Thank you. I saw some communications today and had a discussion with a resident in the community regarding Sutton Park Field gates at the baseball fields being locked. I contacted the town manager, and under, when he has his own communication, I would ask that he report on the issue and the resolution the town came up with. I'd also like the town manager to give a report on the, what I would call the so-called lawsuit being discussed regarding data centers. And I would like to let our community know that I have not been served with any type of lawsuit. I have not been served by any type of marshal or anything. So I also attended the business development meeting in Groton regarding the puzzle of what to do with business development in Groton. And some of the items that he brought up were to have incentives, and one of the things that stuck out to me was to cut out the red tape and to clear a path for developers that is not overly consuming and hard, because they will turn and walk away. And once they walk away and they've done their research on our community and they've left, there's probably no getting them back because they've already tried once and they're not coming back. And they also had discussed that in the development community, that they talk to each other. And there's been much discussion about Groton and things that have happened in the past so many years and what developers, how they perceive Groton. And then today before the meeting, I stopped down at Aquatic Plains for first night. It was exciting. There was a lot going on, and I hope the community is out there enjoying themselves. It seemed like, I didn't get to stay very long, but it seemed like a very good turnout, and everybody was having a great time. So it would be really nice in the coming years if we could potentially not do council meetings on first night, because I'd rather spend a Tuesday night with my community and with all the booths that are there and see what our community is enjoying, and maybe have a meeting on a Wednesday would be better. So thank you. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Council Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received various emails and communications. I attended last week the solving the development puzzle by the Economic Development Group here in Groton, which was very well-attended. There's a lot of interesting information that was passed on. I also tonight attended the National Night Out. It's, as Council Franco said, it's very well-attended. It's a beautiful night out there tonight, and it's great to see the community out there and lots of booths and ice growth from last year that we have this year going on. So that was terrific. And I also did the Food Bank last Friday.
Thank you, Council McBride.
Great, thank you. Numerous emails, as other councillors have received, and various pieces of correspondence. Last Wednesday, I attended a legislative outlook webinar regarding recent changes and future projection changes to school funding. I did submit to the RTM a request to consider using the power of initiative from Section 4.5 of the Charter to place before the council a resolution to adopt the 2023 town-owned property reuse policy. Also held a public safety meeting this evening that started at 5:30. I'll go into a little detail about this on the committee reports, but would like to note that the next meeting is August 22nd, and that hopefully will be wrapping up that committee's work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Boardaline.
Thank you. I did send a referral for regards to Kelly Paulson's request for a light trespass ordinance. Don't know much about it or what it would look like, but, you know, when community comes out and asks for something, I think it's a job to at least send something forward and investigate it and see what we could come up with and see if it's something I can agree with or not. I heard that we did get one. Council Westerville did agree to move it forward. I just need one more councillor to agree to that, and it could make it on the list of possible agenda items. I did receive an email from the day, from Kim Drellick, requesting comments regarding the whole lawsuit with the data centers. I did initially send an email to the town manager saying I didn't receive any information. What I meant to say in that is, we get a ton of emails, and what I got was, oh, there's a lawsuit, which I knew because I went to the P&amp;Z meeting that night, so I knew that was coming. But it didn't say that we were individually named and how we should proceed forward in great detail. Like Councilor Franco stated, I was never served either, but our name is up there, and I think, you know, to serve, we should know when our name is pending on any type of litigation, because for certain jobs and functions, you have to disclose if your name is up there being presented on a litigation. So I'm still waiting for a formal meeting with the town manager and our legal attorneys from the town to just go over it. If it is not a legitimate lawsuit, then that's great, but I think we should have the same type of meeting when people have FOIs and are being represented. I feel that the attorney should be reaching out to us when our names are being publicly put up there. I also received an email from Joel Merle of 14 Pearl Street, second request, talking about the noise and problems downtown Mystic, and not speaking of traffic circling around, but about people being let out of bars at late at night. I also did receive and saw the same thing that Councilor Franco talked about. It was up on the community forum. A person on there spoke about the fields being locked and not used for play, so that would be great, that there's some opinion on that tonight, because people were concerned that they could not access baseball fields. I also just wanted to inform everybody that Sutton Park's going to have improvements coming soon. They're having a public input session on August 16th at 6:00 p.m. I also attended the National Night Out as well tonight. Many towns around the community are doing such, including New London, Groton, and various towns, and got to stay for a short amount of time. You're definitely geared towards, like, getting the children involved, which was really nice to see. I also did attend the business development meeting as well, and it was stated that, you know, there needs to be no red tape for development here. My concern is that the developer made a reference to Alabama, which has no conservation and restrictions, so when you move red tape, sometimes things like that get through that you don't want. So you want to be careful about how much you remove that, because it protects us from the environmental standpoint.
Thank you.
So that's all I have. Thank you.
Council Westerville.
Thank you very much. I've received much the same communications that the other councillors have gotten, including the pervasive noise, which that problem is getting worse and worse downtown, and it's not just traffic, it's with the people leaving the bars and stuff like that. And I guess something, we need to pay attention to that, and we need to kind of rein that in some, I believe. That's from my perspective. Other than that, the Property Reuse Committee, I've received a lot of communications concerning that and the power of initiative, and I personally support that and am ready to see that move forward. Thank you very much.
If you use your three minutes.
May I just add something I forgot?
Three minutes. Onto the clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Melendez. The RTM Finance Committee, who will be meeting tomorrow night, they have two referrals. Well, the RTM itself has two referrals, and their rules require all items to be reviewed by a committee, or then they have to suspend that rule if they want to work on something on a night that's on the agenda. Anywho, then the next week, next Wednesday, which I've forgotten the date, but it's the next RTM meeting, and that will be at the Thrive 55 on August 9 at 7:00. And they do have one item, oh, two items on their agenda.
Thank you. Clerk of the council.
So I haven't heard any news about the resignation, the appointment to fill the vacancy. I just want to caution you that you have until August 19th, or the RTM can appoint.
Thank you.
I just had a question. With the upcoming election, November 7, a lot of people have been talking about, I know you don't have the registered voters, but with the combination of the city and the town, is there any new flyers or education that would be being put out from the office that you received or any information or updates that you have? I know it's mainly affecting Districts 2 and 3 only, so I didn't know if there's anything in the education that will be coming forward.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything. It's a little early to have anything. We're just now, just received the nominations from the political parties, and I'm getting petitions in from other part, from people petitioning onto the ballot. It's a time that registered voters and I are pretty tight, but that's only a couple weeks. It'll be all over by August 9. Then we'll get down to brass tacks. So, but I know that for the city election, there is, I tried to get a ballot for District 3 and 2 on the same ballot, you know, for, just for absentee ballots, because you'll have to go to two different places to get your ballot for absentee, and I think that's kind of silly, but that's, it couldn't work in any other way. I tried, though, I really did.
Thank you. Onto the town manager.
Good evening. In terms of the lawsuit, nobody's been served. It's not a legitimate lawsuit. They'd have to go through another process, do it correctly. And originally, Mr. Fiorello had sent that to the town council, not myself. A councillor sent it on to me, and then I replied to the council, but apparently he got the email, I just wronged for councillor, Boardaline maybe, I think, or Council Franco, is that right? And I did not know that. I thought it went to all the councils, so I will not accept any blame for that. And I didn't appreciate a comment go to the paper that it was the first you had heard of it. So that was not, that was maybe the most unprofessional thing I've seen in 26 years. It was very bad. And I did correct it with the newspaper and showed them where you didn't know, so that's not going to stand in the future for that kind of thing. Sutton Park, for Sutton Park, baseball fields back in, I think it was April, Mystic Little League had made complaints that there was a lot of dog waste within the fence line, because you can close the fence. And so they asked for it to be locked. It was locked at that time. Today was the first I heard of it being locked. What we came up with, people will close that gate so they can let their animals roam in there. So what we're going to do is lock it open when not in use, when it's not in a game, so that you can't just lock your animals in there. So you could, you know, and we'll also put up increased signage, that kind of thing. So hopefully, that will help it. The Public Works Director and I had a meeting with the DOT today. They are looking at another project, I know around Long Point Road, they're looking at where it goes, where the bridge goes over Amtrak Railroad Line. Today was our first time getting briefed on it. If the project were to go forward, and if the council wished to have the project go forward, it's a 15% match from the local community. So it was the first we were aware of that. DOT has four options they're looking at for that project. They want to do a public, of course, input. They want to get with the town council to present those to the council, and eventually, at some point, the council would have to weigh in on the option, the four options, as well as whether you're willing to commit to funding. Now, part of the funding we might build for our part, might be able to get through the state local bridge funding program, so hopefully, we can get part of that funded through there. So we'll see how that proceeds. I'm supposed to get a presentation I gave today in fiat email. I will send that to the council, so everyone's aware of what was presented, and we'll go from there. Building Department now, the planning department now has, as part of their website, permitting online, you can do building and zoning permits now live. I just went, I just began last week, still working on a few tiny bugs, but it looks great so far. Tested it out, a couple of things, it looks great. Human Services, TBCCA is going to place an energy worker at Human Services for the first week of September to help with funding, if people need a funding for energy assistance. And then after that, they're going to do, I think Thursday's ongoing for the time being, so that'll be great help to people. And the police social worker, workers, one of them is going to establish some limited hours at the library, so people could meet with one of them at the library regularly, so like a weekly time, so that'll be good. Just a quick note on the solar trash compactors for downtown Mystic. They should be delivered the end of August. They're being built in a new facility, making it go a little longer to get built. They're just opening up that facility. So end of August, we'll have them hopefully here, and then we'll get them installed as quick as possible. And that's all I have.
Council Franco.
Thank you. So I just wanted to go back over to the data center so-called lawsuit. I received the email on July 14, and I read it, and it appears to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, do you believe it was even written by an attorney?
We don't, we do not. We don't, we do not believe so.
Because that's the, how, when I read it as well.
There are a lot of errors in there, and they sent notice instead of to Town Hall, they sent it, some not official notice, but they sent a notice of, well, they listed the municipal building for the city. They didn't send anything there, but that's what they listed for the address.
Right. And, and when I read it, it was just a lot of inflammatory language as well. It didn't seem like a legal document at all. And, and when I read it, I did see each of our names listed. And, and I would like to notate that I personally, in a legal aspect of it, I don't consider it to be your job to notify me. I, of a, that I'm in a lawsuit, I think it is the plaintiff's job to serve me with the documents personally. I appreciate that you did share the email with me, so I would be notified of it, but it's not legally, I don't believe, your job to notify me. It is legally the plaintiff's duty to serve me by a marshal notifying me. But I thank you very much, and I thank you for taking, you know, Sutton Park Park and reviewing that today, and I really appreciate. Thank you.
And just to mention, if you recall, there was a lawsuit in Rhode Island by the same person a few months back. Did the same thing. You can file these cases for about $300 to $400 online. It's much more expensive to do the proper servicing, so it's, it's more of a, in my opinion, scare tactic. It's, I guess, apparently it's done the same thing in Massachusetts to people, Rhode Island.
Right. And then after it was written, the full language of the document, he then signed his name.
Just a reminder that we're only asking questions at this moment.
No, I have a question. It was also notated that Whitey Bulger is still alive, and there's conspiracy theories with mafia in Boston. Does that have anything to do with Groton at all?
No, but I take the mayor's point. We are getting into the realm of breaking FOIs, so really supposed to be very simple one or two questions.
Mister Man, thank you, Mister Mayor. I just wanted to ask the, the manager. I'm, I'm under the assumption that all lawsuits party to the town, town employees, town boards and commissioners.
We're not a party yet.
I know, but all of them have to be served to the town?
Right.
Which is me?
So nothing yet.
Okay.
And where you served, may I ask then, are you, have you been served?
Absolutely not.
Yep, thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
Uh, thank you. You know, as you referenced, to town manager, my question, you referenced that, you know, my email and other counselor's email were incorrect. When I got the email that you originally sent out, it was just, you know, a quick blurb. I said, okay, I already knew that, you know, moved on to the next email.
You did have a piece of the lawsuit in it, yep.
So I did not, it did not say in that email.
Counsel Borlon, what's your question?
My question is, we should, in future, it would be nice if it would just say, each counselor is personally named, if you have any questions, our attorneys, and that, you know, there's no lawsuit, no one's been served, but it would be nice to know in that write-up that we were personally named. I understand that it might be a bogus lawsuit, or is that what's being said?
Counsel Borlon, what's your question?
My question is, it is in fact up on the Superior Court website. Is that correct, town manager?
I haven't looked since I have a copy. I would assume so.
Okay, so yeah, it's not, it's, so it's bogus in nature, but our names are up on the website. So I just ask the town manager in future if there's any way that we could be personally notified when you guys are aware of it, since most of us just do this in the evening.
Counsel Borlon, what's your question?
So if we could be notified when you receive it.
And remember, I thought you were notified, because your name was on there as being, receiving.
And I can respect that. And when I sent my message out, I was honestly saying I did not receive it from this Philip Figarello, or, so again, that's my first question. Next thing is, is it was spoke tonight by Mrs. Ferlong about a litter thing. I will be sending something about a litter ordinance forward, as well as the concern for if there's a lot of dog waste in the baseball fields. Then my concern is, have we researched and made sure that we may need another dog park? The one dog park I can think of is on the far side of town, which wouldn't serve this side. So I guess the town manager, has there been any requests recently for any referrals for a dog park?
No, and it's believed is mostly just neighbors near that park that brought their dogs.
I'll also send a referral to, to request that, and I'm happy to hear that the fence will be opened back up.
And just note for the council, we're down to a few months left. We're not going, you know, the term, so we're not going to get very far in larger new things. We're running out of time for that. So ordinance level stuff, we can start, but it's not going to wrap up in this term.
And then my other question is, as far as, you know, consult, consultants for economic development, how long is our contract with the current person that we have?
I don't know. Usually they're individual contracts, you know. And the time for both RTM and council to look at these types of things is to ask questions during the budget process. I'm not going to go through and document every contract we have out there, but.
So I can send an email just asking how long the contract is for this one?
For one particular one, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I, I'll verbally say that, and I will send it in the email. And did you also receive this, this complaint that was CC'd from 14 Pearl Street that was also supposedly CC'd to the, the police chief as well?
After the fact, not, yeah, after the fact.
Because I'm getting them by mail, so I can't go and call them. And has anybody addressed, has the community officer gone out and spoke with the family yet?
The community officer, I'd already spoken once, I believe, with that individual before that, and I'm sure he will more, now that he's established there, I'm sure there'll be a lot more of that. And we'll probably be talking about some of those things at the next traffic authority meeting, too. But, you know, as the, as the chief head went over last week, we're pretty much, you know, it's not, unless we want to start hiring more officers for Mystic alone, or it's going to be difficult, there's only so much we could do without even more help, so. And noise ordinance is not going to do it. It needs to be, it would have to be bodies pretty much in every corner, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying I'm supporting an ordinance. I'm just, was asking, because people are complaining, you know, not about the noise, about the people in the bars.
That's the thing, one night, it was a, hmm, four to six weeks ago, we had almost, there was two fights almost simultaneous in downtown Mystic. And literally, you know, and one was in a bar, so literally you'd have to have someone in every place at every corner. It's, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah. My, my last question would be, you know, when I went to school in Worcester, and I spent a lot of time in downtown New Hampshire, it's one thing to grow, you know, we, we drove Mystic to be this big boom for economic development. So my question is, we have to support then the people, the people who go to these places, as well as the, the businesses. We must find a way then to, I don't, I don't agree necessarily with the noise ordinance, but maybe some way to have someone present when the bars let out. I agree, we can't have someone in every corner.
We do keep someone down there.
So is there a way that we can look at that and discuss, police presence, even if it is hiring someone to be down there?
Well, you know, we just went over last week what all is being done, and there is somebody down there as bars let out, sometimes a couple patrols at times. Now, if the council wants to hire more individuals, then that could certainly be a referral, if you wanted somebody, more people dedicated to downtown Mystic.
Yeah, that's my question, because I guess they said if something comes up, they're pulled. And I think as we grow more economic development, you can't just grow and not support the, the problems in the area. You have to grow and support them. So that's my question.
Totally agree with that.
So it'd have to be a referral of some sort to do such. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, manager Burt, I felt properly notified and in a timely manner. It was a manner of minutes from when you were notified of the lawsuit to when it was in the emails of every counselor. So thank you for that. Onto the committee reports. Yeah, a couple of absences. Public Safety Chair McBride?
Thank you. As I indicated earlier, we had a meeting tonight. Counsel Franco, town manager Burt, myself, Chief Driscoll, several other members from the fire departments have been very helpful over the last few months, working on a policy and analysis to support a presentation to the council. It's really focused on two main items. And the overall piece is what percentage of the pilot that the, that the town receives should be provided to the, the police districts. I believe there's eight or nine of them. So we have a, a draft plan that's put together, and we have a recommendation in its current form of taking 50% of that number, which I think it's 1.7 or so, around there, and allocating that to the districts. And the second piece of the puzzle is between, I think it's five or six different criteria, and taking that number of the 50% and how to allocate it across the board to the various fire districts. So we're working on that. The next meeting's the 22nd, and hopefully we can wrap it up at that meeting and provide something to the council for a recommendation. But the, the people involved have done a tremendous amount of work, and it looks like things are moving forward. So we'll hopefully have some information. The computation and calculation is somewhat complicated, so we're just working on to fine tune details on how to make sure it's easily understandable. Tim Driscoll's been very involved and has done a lot of work on it, and he's put it together, so we just want to make sure it's detailed enough so a person can read it and understand it. So more to follow on that in a couple of weeks.
Counsel Borlon?
Uh, thank you. I've been following those meetings very closely. Thank you for all your work and efforts on that, Counsel McBride. I know a seat was vacated, and I did send a request asking to fill the vacancy. I didn't know if that had come to the chair yet.
A question had come to me, but I don't, it's not my position to fill, it's not my role to fill the position, but I did receive a question, and I responded back to the chair, or the president, or the mayor, I get confused on that. The mayor in terms of my thoughts, and I, I'm not sure if he's appointing anyone, or if he's thinking it's, the committee's wrapping up and may not need it, I'm not sure, so I'll, I'll defer to him on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto new business. Groton Open Space Association Grant Application Endorsement Request. I'll make, I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution endorsing Groton Open Space Association's application to the State of Connecticut's Department of Environmental and Energy Protections Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program, whereas the Groton Open Space Association, GOSSA, has requested the Groton Town Council's endorsement of an application for grant funds to purchase 89 acres of property consisting of two parcels of land with frontage on North Road Route 117, and currently owned by Thomas and Mary Ann Haley. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council endorses GOSSA's application to the State of Connecticut Department of Environmental and Energy Protections Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program for the 89 acre property fronting North Road Route 117. So move.
Second.
Move by Melendez, second by Jones. Counsel Borlon?
I think it's no brainer. You know, they're seeking money from the state, which, you know, puts no liability for the town. In fact, they get more money with our endorsement. So I think just great effort from them, and want to thank them for all their hard work and due diligence in protecting and maintaining our town, and really being forward thinkers and thinking about ways that our future generations to come are going to need protected land here. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Oh, I know Counsel Parker is here. It's 7:31. Counsel Parker, how do you vote? You're muted if, if you're trying to. I think we'll counter as not present yet. Carries unanimously six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the nuclear safety grant. I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program Grant, whereas the Town of Groton Police Department applied for and was awarded $70,000 in pool funding from the State of Connecticut Nuclear Safety Emergency Program, NSEP, and whereas this funding will be used to purchase additional web-based cameras to be located along evacuation points around our community to help telecommunications as well as officers in the event and evacuation is ordered, and whereas remaining grant funds will be applied to EMD salaries and drill supplies, now therefore be it resolved, the town council authorizes town manager John Burt to execute any and all documents to accept the NSEP grant funding in the amount of $70,000 and refer the matter to the RTM. So move.
Second, Franco.
Move by Melendez, second by Franco. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carries unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
I'll read the next one if you don't mind. Make a resolution appointing the Town of Groton Tree Warden, whereas the ordinance of the Town of Groton at section 15 dot 5 dash 35, provide that the tree warden shall be licensed arborist and otherwise certified and be appointed to the town council for a term of one year, and until a successor is appointed and qualified. And whereas Steve and, Steve Post, the town's previous tree warden, has retired, and whereas Jeff Church, Parks and Rec supervisor, will be attending the Tree Wardens Association of Connecticut's Fall 2023 Tree Warden Academy, now therefore be resolved that Jeff Church is hereby appointed the tree warden of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, to succeed Steve Post for a term of one year, and until a successor is appointed and qualified. I so move. Second?
Move by Franco, second by Borlon. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Counsel Parker, is she?
You voted aye, Counsel Parker?
It's a aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I did not, aye.
No worries. That carries seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Could I read the next one? Item 2023-504, Groton Age Friendly Plan. Resolution to adopt the Groton Age Friendly Plan, whereas the American Association of Retired Persons Network of Age Friendly States and Communities was established in April 2012 as an independent affiliate of the World Health Organization Global Network for Age Friendly Cities and Communities, and whereas membership in the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities means that a community's elected leadership has made a commitment to actively work with residents and local advocates to make their town, city, county, or state an age-friendly place to live, and whereas in 2021, the Age Friendly Planning Committee made up of the town and city planning staff, Thrive 55 staff, and representatives from the RTM Representative Town Meeting and Board of Education, was established for Groton to seek designation as an AARP Age Friendly Community, and whereas Groton became a member of the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities on October 22nd, 2021, and whereas a community assessment and age-friendly plan was developed within two years of designation, and whereas the plan was presented to the Town Council Committee of the Whole on July 25th, 2023, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby adopts the final Groton Age Friendly Plan as presented. I so move.
Second?
Move by Westerville, second by Borlon. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Carries unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the committee of the whole 2023 meeting schedule.
Resolution approving the 2023 Town Council Committee of the Whole revised meeting dates. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves the Town Council Committee of the Whole revised meeting dates from 2023 as follows. Tuesday, August 8, 2023, special meeting, change from August 7th. Monday, September 11th, 2023, change from September 12th due to primary elections.
And do you want me to say aye, so move?
Sure.
Second?
Move by Borlon, second by Jones. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carries unanimously seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Other business, open agenda, item review.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Jones.
Second, Franco.
Second by Counsel Franco. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? We adjourn unanimously at 7:37.